If any, you want to go, you're welcome, but we're asking everybody who's not a property owner to just sit and listen in the back.
Okay.
So we're not going to kick anyone out, but it's a special.
I just wanted to run.
Yeah, Ron, okay.
I think you're about to hear the chat.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, that's, okay. Yeah, that's.
You guys all ready?
We are.
Good to go. Okay. Questions? All right, it being Tuesday, May twenty eighth, six P M., here at Westborough's Town Hall on thirty-four West Main Street, I will now convene the meeting of the Westborough Select Board. Like to invite anyone who's. Sorry, yeah, anybody who would like to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I'd like to invite anyone up for open forum. Don't see anybody, so we'll move on. Yeah, and then I want to thank Westborough TV for live streaming and recording tonight's meeting on Westborough TV. All right, we'll move on to item number two, the approval of the Greater Boroughs Partnership for Health Intermunicipal Agreement for the Public Health Excellence Shared Service Grant.
Yep, so the board, you have in your packet the one that we are previously operating under, which was our first I M A for the borough's shared health, shared services. And it was really, it was, has been a great opportunity for the town to get some additional services in a regional setting. So one of the things that came out of that was the public health nurse, which was, has really been instrumental in terms of vaccinations and also education, specifically at the senior center, but also for families in the community. So this is a request to sign the subsequent I M A for the next, actually several years. As long as the grant is, is awarding funds, we would keep this in place, or twenty-five years. And so Northborough is the host of this grant. We also have, I believe, West Boylston and, and then ourselves, Westborough and.
Southborough.
Something, Southborough, thank you, pulling up at the same time. And so it's been, it really has been a really great opportunity for us. One of the things that we are working on with them currently, which I brought up before, is the, the use of the opioid money that we've received through settlements. And so, as the board knows, it's very specific how that money can be spent and so, and it requires a lot of community engagement. So the, this Greater Boroughs Partnership has hired consultants to help with that. Some of the other things working on, so we actually get pool inspection software, so we'll continue to get that. The, there's training courses for the public health, and they're able to hold those for the community. Just really a good opportunity for our health folks to get training. And then the Community Health Assessment and Improvement Plan, which is something that really drove this, recommendations that came out of it, continuing to gather that feedback, so. And Jen Kirk Sullivan would have been here to present it, but they actually have a Board of Health meeting right now, so, but they have looked it over, Town Council has approved it. And so now going to all the communities for a board signature.
Okay, questions?
Yeah, Christie, if you would, please, who is, in reading the contract, who is our representative on the advisory board? There's a delegate and a representative. Do you know who that is? I know that it has to be either the Board of Health member or a designee from that board.
I don't know the specific person.
Okay.
It's, I actually watched the last meeting.
Oh.
It's, it's Jen.
Okay.
Sullivan is representative, and Maria Gonzalez.
Okay.
Is the alternate.
Okay.
The new alternate, it used to be Ray.
Okay, so Jen being our director is our delegate, and then Maria is our health inspector.
All right.
But it could have been anybody on the board as well.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, right. No, I was just, as I was reading, I realized it was something that I didn't know, so I wanted to understand that. And I know sometimes, I know those meetings are subject to open meeting law, so there are minutes and all of that. I did not look. Do we post those meetings on our calendar? I know sometimes like there are like regional M P O type meetings. Do we, do we post those? And if we don't, could we, I guess?
I'm just not sure, I'm not sure if these are subject to open meeting law, but if they are, we can post them.
They are, I mean, according to the.
Well, I saw the agendas and minutes posted on Northborough's site as the town sort of in charge.
Because they're the host, obviously, but, all right, well, as a suggestion.
Yep, we can get them posted, that's fine.
That, those are my two questions, thanks, thank you both.
And I think in, I found the meetings posted on Northborough's YouTube channel.
Look at Sean, I know, you should have presented that.
Right, right, all right, thank you, thanks for the research, Sean.
I never assume I'm the most informed, pardon me.
In this moment, you are.
The winner.
All right.
Nice work.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I did have a couple of questions. It sounded like, following this agreement, they've sort of pulled out kind of what the services will be so they, so this can sort of live in perpetuity, this agreement, and then those can be an amendment to this agreement. And it sounds like they'll be determining that, it may be, the last meeting that was available, I think, was their March meeting, as I saw. So it either happened in May or will happen in June. I don't know if Jen could come to a future meeting to sort of give us some details. Because they're, I think, making some changes based on the current environment and what they're going to do with those funds, so.
That was sort of along the lines of the advisory board question, yes, thank you.
Expect what they're doing with the money will vary from year to year and even mid-year.
Right.
Based on needs.
Yeah, so it also varies a little bit from town to town, as an example. So we had, the public health nurse was part of the benefit that we received, but going forward, that actually won't be part of the grant, so you all know that, because we talked about paying for that in the budget. But the document, and, I mean, Jen can certainly come, but the document in the beginning of this with the successes and goals are intended to show you what Westborough has received from the grant, so this is specific to Westborough, and then also what we anticipate receiving from the grant going forward. So I mentioned some of them, increased health staffing was things that we did receive, software, increased access to inspectional and nursing supplies, nursing support, monitoring of infectious diseases, except for T B., which is monitored separately. Senior support, so we did have our public health nurse at lots of, actually, he spends, I think, one day a week at the senior center, so doing health clinics, wellness checks, childhood immunizations we've held in Town Hall, N R C A N trainings, there's a newsletter and social media, access to epidemiologists to evaluate data trends, and then the opioid money, which I mentioned. So that's things that we've already benefited from through this grant. And then going forward, still using the software for pool inspections, meeting the Foundation Public Health Services Framework and workforce standards for local public health, developing priorities for potential use of the opioid abatement funds, and then preventative training. So C P R, first aid, stop the bleed, other emerging, addressing other emerging healthcare issues. So specifically, one of the things that they're going to be looking at is hoarding. And then they're looking to pilot a maternal child and family health program in the region, so resources, classes, and trainings. And then that Community Health Assessment and Improvement Plan, so that they can make data-driven recommendations. But certainly Jen can come, but that was the intention of this document that she put together, and it is specific to Westborough.
Would you like a motion, Mr. Chair? I move to approve Westborough's continued participation in the Greater Boroughs Partnership for Health through execution of the intermunicipal agreement for the Public Health Excellence for Shared Services Grant.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. All right, moving on to item three, public, we, no, we're not ready. We're going to move on to interdepartmental transfers, item ten.
So you have, I think you have one interdepartmental transfer in your packet, but you actually have both of them in front of you on your table. So the first one is, I'll start with the water. So the request is to trans, I'll back up. So interdepartmental transfers are transfers that can happen in May of June, in May and June of each year with the approval of both the Select Board and the Advisory Finance Committee. We cannot expend funds, and this is an example, so we, when, the way that we approve budgets at town meetings, we approve salary and wages, we approve expenses. We can't intermingle those funds at all, even within one department, or definitely not between departments. So this request here is to transfer sixty thousand dollars from water salary and wages to water operations and maintenance expenses. And that really is a result of an increase in cost for electricity. Electricity is actually one that we often come to you with interdepartmental transfers, because it's hard to be able to anticipate spikes in need for electricity. And then certainly when we're talking about streetlights, there's other factors that play into that, but, so this is specific to an electricity need, and this is transferring the sixty thousand within the water, which is an enterprise fund, so that actually makes it much less complicated to do it within, within that budget.
Would you like a motion for?
Sure. I, I move to approve the interdepartmental transfer to move sixty thousand dollars from water O and M salary wages to water O and M expenses, as presented.
Second.
Need further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you.
Great. And then the second one is a request for central purchasing. So central purchasing is the budget, it actually runs out of our office, and it does, it pays for all of the copier maintenance, all of the paper, lots of different office supplies, and postage. So postage is kind of another one of those things, it's a little, it's, there's some variability, depending on how much is, how much mail is sent out each year. And so we are requesting to move ten thousand dollars from youth and family services salary and wages to central purchasing. A lot of times, I think, it, it sounds a little confusing, what does youth and family services salary and wages have to do with central purchasing? But it's just where, whatever budget there is available funds, we can move those funds into a different budget with your approval on the A F C. So this ten thousand dollars, we think, would cover us for postage and other central purchasing bills through the end of the year. And I'll just note that for next year, we did increase the central purchasing budget.
Okay, any further discussion, or can I get a motion?
Just a question, Christie, so this is for F Y twenty-four?
Current year, yep.
Okay, so this has no impact on the new contract we just signed, that was fully budgeted for new youth and family services.
Oh, correct, yes.
And that would be an expense line anyway.
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so I move to approve the interdepartmental transfer to move ten thousand dollars from youth and family services salary wages to central purchasing, as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, Christie. All right, why don't we do meeting minutes, item eleven? Any discussion on the meeting minutes for May fourteenth? Seeing none, anybody would like to make a motion?
I request to approve the meeting minutes of May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
I'm, I'm going to abstain.
Abstain?
I wasn't there.
Okay. Did you get that, Sheila?
Three zero one, got it.
Little early, but would you be willing to do the town managers' report?
Sure.
All right.
And that is also on, on the desk in front of you. So the board, the board committee website module is up, so Owen gave us a presentation on that. But we are using it for appointments and reappointments that are coming up in, in, for July one. So anyone who has members of boards or committees who have terms that are expiring in June, received an email from the website informing them that they would need to reapply if they're interested in reappointment. As this is the first year using the process, an email from the town manager's office was also sent to boards and committee chairs, letting them know to expect it. And so we will be using that, that system in order to set reappointments, which will be on your agendas in June. For the Memorial Day Parade, Jeff Farrell, who's the director with the Central Mass Veterans Services District, would like to extend his thanks to the board for their thoughtful remarks and support of the parade and honoring the following. In the Waste Management, we'll talk about this more on the agenda item, but just wanting folks to know that we're going to be holding two additional pay-as-you throw information sessions regarding that transition on July one. The sessions will be June fifth at the Senior Center at ten A M. and June eighteenth in this room, Memorial Hall, at six P M. In the Finance Department, the Finance Department recently issued the third excise commitment, so these payments are due to the town by June twenty-fourth. We're also very excited to welcome Allison Lawrence, our new town accountant. Her first day will be Monday, June third. The Recreation Department, all summer programs are open now for registration, and some are already full, so the catalog of programs can be found on the Westborough Recreation Department website. The golf season is in full swing, the course is busy, and through the summer, food trucks will be at the course Friday through Sunday. A full schedule of golf course events is available at the golf course website, which you can get to through the town website. The Senior Center, the annual volunteer recognition breakfast was held on May twenty-second. They honored many of the volunteers who provide so much for our seniors. The Sunshine Cafe, or Memory Cafe, and the Saturday Sunshine Respite Program continue to do very well with more people attending each month. Looking forward to expanding these programs for family caregivers. Council on Aging members toured the new community center space recently, so keep an eye out for more information on classes and activities that will be offered that we're also going to talk more about at the agenda item tonight, is the community center. And then the Town Clerk, state nomination papers for the primary election in September and non-party candidates for the election in November were certified this month. Residents who did not respond to the vote-by-mail postcard sent by the Secretary of State earlier in the year should expect to receive another postcard from the state in June. Vital record statistics for twenty twenty-four through May is eighty-three births, one hundred and ten deaths, and twenty-seven marriages. Thank you.
Thank you, Christie. All right, now we'll move on to item three, a public hearing. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open public hearing, request for a new Section twelve wine and malt liquor license for Arena W B L D B A Launch Entertainment Park at two ninety Turnpike Road.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
We'll call her.
No.
No, I wish, forget it.
I can never remember.
I confirmed that before the meeting. I couldn't remember either.
Yeah, I should have just rolled with whatever you did.
Four zero on that one, Sheila. Okay, well, so Christie, do you want to tee this up, or?
Do you want to just have them present it?
Yes, please come on up. Introduce yourselves, please.
Hi, I am Allison Griss, Director of Admin for Arena W B L. This is Melissa Fernando, she's the manager. And I have Joe Nerman, who is our Director of Food and Beverage.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Glad you could be here tonight, yes, thank you. So maybe tell us a little bit about your business and why you're before us tonight.
Yeah, so we run a family entertainment center. We have trampolines, arcade machines, games like that for our kids. We've gotten a lot of requests from our customers, from the parents, to make it more parent-friendly also, so that while they're at the business, they can enjoy themselves too. So we're working on renovating, adding some TVs and more restaurant options, so that they can enjoy themselves also. So we wanted to provide beer and wine as well.
Fantastic, well, I, I'll just open up to the rest of the board, see if you all have any questions, or?
Yeah, so, appreciate, so first of all, congratulations on sort of the, I wouldn't say not footprint expansion, but expansion or renovation within. Just because I don't think we're going to see any slides tonight, could you just describe for folks listening, watching, what that's going to look like and feel like? And I do have a question about entry and exit, which is why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, for sure.
Sure, so as far as.
If you could speak into the microphone, so we've got folks at home.
You got it.
Thanks.
The overall food and beverage will be basically in our, what we call Crave Restaurant, which will be seating plus party rooms, which are three party rooms. And then the questions on.
Yes, so you're, are you adding seating, you said, you're adding?
So we're going to try and, we're modifying it all, add it, we just added a few TVs, we'll add a few more, plus seating, partitions if, you know, allowed and all that. And then the party rooms will be as is.
Okay, okay. And, and so I guess this question maybe is to you, Christie, is, or someone, where are you at in the process of sort of the approval? Again, we do have some sketches here with some highlighted areas, where are you at in terms of the approval process for that layout?
So it'll, it'll go as is, right now, we'll, we'll put up the partitions on the, on the floor, basically, that'll encompass where, where it'll be. I think it's highlighted on the thing. And then we'll start adding seating as, you know, for us, the summer's a little slower, so we wanted to do it in stages.
Sure.
And, and do it that way, but, so it'll be a three to six month process, depending on how that goes.
Okay, great.
It does look like, though, that you have not passed your annual inspection yet.
So the, the fire department was in earlier today, everything on our end, under our control, was done. The only thing we're missing is the hydrant report from the landlord, which was the whole building.
Okay.
The whole plaza.
Okay.
So we've talked to them, Joanne from the landlord company has talked with Bill, so they're working on getting it all squared away. But everything on the inside can square up today.
Yeah, and I would just, I would recommend, since we had a situation with a totally different business, where there was a hydrant issue, and it really, it required them to come back a couple times, and it was very frustrating for all parties, so even though it's kind of out of your control.
No, we're on top of it.
Yeah, please, yeah, you get it, okay, yeah. All right, yeah, you don't want, you don't want to let that slip, because that can really mess things up. And then just a question, I, I read somewhere, but I didn't see it on the highlighted area, it sounded like entrance, there would be an entrance and exit option to the Crave area, where this new beverage area will also be available, but I'm not seeing that, it looks like it's, go ahead, yeah, well, there's no door there. Are you creating a new entrance just for that?
Down the hallway by the three rooms?
No, so the entrance, there's the main entrance, when you enter the building.
Yep.
And then there will be partitions, we're not building anything else, but stanchions and temporary partitions blocking off the area where they're allowed to eat.
Okay, so everyone's going to come in through the main entrance, and then?
And then you enter another little opening.
Okay, in order to get in there, okay. And, and in that area, can folks who are underage also be in that area eating, but just not, obviously, drinking alcohol? Yes, okay, okay, just, but alcohol will only be able to be consumed in that area?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. And, yeah, I guess our fellow board member, Ian Johnson, is not here, he usually gives this speech, so I'll, I'll, I'll give it a try, but just, first of all, we're, you know, happy we're expanding and offering this, we take it very seriously, and, you know, we expect you to take it seriously, and we don't, you know, it's always great to potentially award that license. What we don't want to do is have you in here for an issue of underage, and, and, you know, our, our police do a great job of, of making sure everyone is compliant, so participate in that process as, as you would, your, your, your name is on that license, right? And you take it seriously, and people will come, you'll be able to grow your business.
I will say, and we do take it serious, this is our first one for the four parks we have.
Yep.
So it's kind of our, you know, preliminary, you know.
Sure.
Get it going, so that we don't want to, naturally, we don't want to screw it up.
Yeah, yeah, you want it to be a model, right, a model of success, no, that's exciting. And again, congratulations, and I'll yield to my fellow board members.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
What are the hours of alcohol service? Have those been set yet?
So it'll, it'll be until about a half hour before our closing, so twelve to seven thirty most nights. We close on Sundays at seven, six, so it'll be five, half hour before.
Okay, and you said that. Okay, and you said that the delineation of the restaurant is going to be with stanchions? Those aren't stanchions that are permanently or fixed into the floor, are they, they're movable?
Correct.
Okay, I have a little bit of concern about that, because people tend to move them?
So we're looking at options right now, but it, it is more of a, so, and, and the other parks, we have half walls, so we're looking at something like that.
Okay.
But, yeah, we're open to suggestions.
Or even a stanchion that clip, you know, that, you know, clips in to the ground, and then you can still pull it out when you want to wax the floors and do the cleaning and stuff?
We're definitely willing to.
And stuff like that, and then, the, the only other thing I noticed that you'll, you'll probably have to be very diligent from a management standpoint, is on weekends in particular, I know you have a lot of kids' parties, right? And that's part of it, this is to help with the parents of the kids, so having the parents, you know, the level of alcohol consumption with the kids being mixed and mingling there
Yes, I mean, we've talked about having limits, you know, two-drink limit type of thing, adults get a wristband and kind of a tear-off system, to make sure that we keep it all under control.
Okay. So, because it's, it's not much different than a restaurant, right? Where alcohol's served at the table, except the environment is a little, people aren't sitting at the table for the whole meeting, they're down, they're up, they're in, they're out, hopefully they're playing the games and dropping the tokens in, and jumping around on the trampoline, so you want that. It's a, it's maybe more of a sports bar feel, so.
Yeah, they won't be allowed to bring the drinks around, you know, to the trampolines and stuff with them.
Okay.
Stay in the food area.
Thank you. This is exciting.
Sorry, so I guess I just want to understand that, you're saying that they're, they're going to be able to take the drinks from that area into the trampoline area?
No, they will not be able to.
Will not be able to, okay, so.
It's a new type of game.
Yeah. I would really worry about some situations, let's put it that way. Sean, did you have any questions?
No, I think I'm good.
It's like what we used to do when we were younger.
Yeah, exactly.
On your own public TV.
Exactly, well, those stories for another day. I, my only question is, and I apologize if you might have already mentioned this, but in, in that area, is there going to be clear marking and signage, you know, of, you know, that that is the area, and?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure it's very clearly delineated.
Yep.
Okay, so that, since this is a public hearing, and seeing no further comments from the board, I'll open up to see if there's anyone from the public has any comments or questions? No, okay. I believe?
We haven't received any as well.
We haven't received any, okay, terrific. In that case, I'll look for a motion.
Yep. So I would move to approve the application of Arena WBL DBA Lunch Entertainment Park at 290 Turnpike Road for a new Section 12 wine and malt liquor license, and to release the license contingent upon the business passing their annual inspection.
Second.
Did I say that correctly?
You, you, just, yeah, and then just further to issue a finding of no detriment.
Is that a second motion, or is that, no, okay.
And, and further to issue a finding of no detriment to the business holding a liquor license.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All those, actually, roll call, right?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Roll call. No, none of us either? All right.
Too much COVID.
I had too many things.
Too many times during COVID.
Right, right.
All those in favor?
Key, oh, yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you very much, and all our best.
Look forward to check.
The annual inspection, once that gets sent through, we'll get, we'll get a report.
No, it's okay, go ahead.
So you, yes, you will get a report, I will not physically release this liquor license to you, which means you won't be able to purchase anything or sell anything until we get word from that. Once, I, I will upload this to the ABCC tomorrow morning, it's going to take six to eight weeks to get a decision anyways, so this is a good time to be doing whatever kinds of renovations and whatnot that, that you need to, to do, but I physically will not release it to you until you get that, that's because that's Mass General law. Well, it's, it's Mass General law, so, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, show this one.
Thank you very much. And we need a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Four and a, four zero. Thank you, everyone. All right, on to item four, site plan overview, dog park at Lyman Street. Hey, welcome, Sean.
I just have one picture. Kyle will do most of the presenting.
Welcome, we all know you, but just introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Jen Kirkland, Recreation Director, here to talk about the dog park, so as you're aware, we're proposing a 21,000-square-foot dog park. Ninety percent of the project will be funded through the Stanton Foundation, so a lot of the design elements that you'll see tonight, that Kyle will talk about, Kyle's our architect, we're, we're designing kind of to the grants, kind of best practices or standards. We held a public information session back in December, and through that information session, it was, two things kind of came out of that meeting, the park was a little small in original design, so we increased it a bit, and we added a little bit more shade. The park will be open to the public, no cost to the user. We'll have two sections, a small dog area and a large dog area. We've been working with the Animal Control Officer to draft policies. I've also reached out to a couple of other dog parks in regards to what their policies are, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel, it's all pretty standard. We'll have signage at the park, similar to our other facilities, regarding hours, right now, we're thinking kind of dawn to dusk, similar to our other playgrounds and facilities. We'll also have the policy posted on the, on the signage at the park, and Stanton also requires a small sta, sign on the park to indicate that funds came from Stanton Foundation. And then just something that kind of came up as of recently, I don't know, Sheila, if I can have my screen up here?
You just have to share your screen, or, or mirror it or whatever. But it'll be up on the side projectors.
Okay. You know how to do that?
F8, you should be able to.
Yeah? Maybe? Second screen?
Sorry, projectors now.
It's not audio on the first one? A po, a podium, is that on the first one, is that what you just changed?
Um, so I put it, I, so that, the first one is the front screen, and then I have it on Westport TV, and Da, David in Westport TV might just need to turn it on on the left-hand side.
It could be me, too. And it doesn't matter, it's just a B-Walt. Okay. Yeah. So all it was, is the B-Walt Trail, which I think we're all familiar with, it has proposed that part of their trail will sort of run adjacent, will run adjacent to where, where we are proposing the dog park. So what I was going to show you is just where the current road is, where the proposed trail would go, and where our dog, dog park sits, but the long and short of it is, is that there's about 40 feet between our dog park fence and the existing road where a trail could be built. If you'd like to see plans, I do have them, that's what I was trying to pull up on the screen. Happy to kind of take any other questions in regards to that after, but.
I have a couple of questions with all the, other board members?
I don't know if you want to let Kyle present first?
Yeah, I was going to say.
Sure, yeah.
Do we have a whole presentation?
So now, yeah, I'll turn it over to Kyle, our architect, who's done a ton of work for us.
Thanks, Jen, my name's Kyle Zick, I'm a landscape architect with KZLA, we're Landkeep Architects in Boston. If you can see my screen, the site of the dog park is near Dr. Solomon Carter Fuller Way, this is Lyman, and that's Lake Chauncey. The site here is basically in this location where I'm following with my cursor. And what are we trying to do, I mean, I think Jen gave a great overview there, I mean, we're trying to create a safe and accessible enclosed space for off-leash dog use and their owners, and we don't want to impact the natural resources, we have a wetland area right here that we'll talk about, and everything we do will be accessible within the dog park, but also connections outside of the dog park. And this photo on the lower left is an existing condition, some of the top soil's been stripped in preparation for this, but otherwise, this is part of the location, and you can see the lake in the distance. So where are, what have we been doing and where are we going? We've reviewed the site, we've expanded on the original concept that the town prepared, we got input from the community, and have prepared construction documents, we've submitted those construction documents to the Conservation Commission and the Mass DEP, and we got our negative determination on our request for determination, and negative in this case is a good thing, that means we don't need any further approval, and we're going through the site plan approval now. And that's why we're in front of you tonight, so ultimately, you know, we can get consensus, and then we'll put bid documents out later this year. Jen mentioned that 90% of the funding is from the Stanton Foundation, and they have some requirements, there are some strings attached, none of them all that onerous, but on the left-hand side are the things that they require. So it has to be fenced five-foot minimum in terms of the height, there has to be water there for drinking and for spraying down the park, shade for dogs and owners, a dual-gate entryway, and I'll show that in the plan, accessible parking, dog waste and receptacles, seating, signage, and surfacing. And then we're showing some agility play components, they're not required by Stanton, but that's, you know, something that we thought would be a good thing to add. So here's Dr. Solomon Carter Fuller Way on the right-hand side that I'm following with my cursor, Lyman's at the bottom, and the lake is off here to the left. So we have, sorry about the pun, a dog leg-shaped dog park, happens to be, that's what fits the site, and we're trying to mirror, these light blue lines here are the wetland flags, that's a wetland associated with the lake, and then there's a 100-foot buffer, and that's the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, so we're trying to have as little of the dog park within that jurisdiction as possible, not just from a permitting standpoint, but just from a stormwater and protecting the resource. But I'll zoom in and give you a little bit more of the orientation, but just to give you a sense that we have some parking proposed, there's an entrance, connections to the existing sidewalk, and then there's a large dog area and a small dog area. How that compares, this number actually, Jen mentioned 20,000 square feet, which is more accurate, we increased the size of the dog park, as we did a little bit of a comparison to other regional dog parks, just to have a sense of, you know, what can we fit, and what's the right balance considering the wetland area, the slope, and the other site constraints. So then, a little bit more detailed information, you know, I'll start here with the parking, we have 10 parking spaces, nine on gravel, one is a paved accessible space, that's immediately adjacent to the entrance here, and then we have a paved sidewalk that leads you out to the public sidewalk. There's a swale between the dog park and the parking, so that that water can get captured and sent away from the dog park, and then that gets us to the entrance, so there's one gate here to a vestibule, a fenced-in vestibule, and then there's a gate for the small dog area and a gate for the large dog. So no dog can run out through one gate and be out in the public realm, they have to get through two gates, that's why we have that system, and that's a requirement from the Stanton. This outline that I'm following is the perimeter five-foot fence, and then there's a fence dividing the small dog area from the large dog area. The white versus the gray, the white is pavement, and we have benches on the pavement, and also a shade structure that will be shared for both small and large dog area, and then another shade structure over here. And that was a request we got from the community, while we've planted a number of trees, the trees are going to be small and take time to grow, so the shade from those trees, you know, something we have to be patient for, so we added these shade structures for that purpose. And then as part of this, we have waste receptacles, we have the leash holder, we have the drinking fountain, and then those agility features that I mentioned are in each space. Each one of these green circles is a proposed tree, they're all native trees, and they avoid some of the existing infrastructure utilities that the town engineer mentioned they'd like us to avoid. I mentioned the, the gate access for the public, we also are thinking about maintenance, so there's a double gate for the small dog area and the large dog area for maintenance equipment to get in here. So that's the general tour of the dog park, and then what is our plan? With the approvals that we get, we would go out to bid this summer, and we construct it as early as this fall. So I'm happy to take any questions, thank you.
Questions?
I have, I have a few questions, and then I think the purpose here is also for us to submit our comments to the planning board. So Kyle, thank, thank you, right, Kyle, did I get that right? Thank you for your presentation, and Jen as well. Just, question, I believe, under the shaded structure that is a paved surface, is that what I'm seeing?
Yes.
Hard surface, yep, so it's accessible, great.
Yep.
Okay. And, let's see here. The trees, the types of trees, I know you said they're native species, has that been done in consultation with our arborist, with DPW?
Yeah, that was a comment from DPW, we, they were all native.
Okay, that's great, so I think just as part of our comment, just to make sure, because we've done, I think, a great job inventorying those trees and maintaining them throughout the town, so this would be no different. Once it's constructed, this is outside of maybe a little scope here, who has maintenance and ownership of it, is that the rec department, or is that DPW?
We'll maintain it as another facility of ours, and can, so we'll be the primary owner and person that takes care of it, with, I'm sure we'll have help with DPW.
Yep, thank you, Jen. And so my comments, I guess, for the planning, so I love, love the concept, I'm supportive of it, I would just note that since it is in the wetlands, I'm sure Conservation and folks more skilled in this than I would, would address any sort of runoff for, you know, drainage, and obviously, dogs are going to be there, and making sure that it's properly pitched, I guess, so that we're not infiltrating wetlands, and again, not asking you to comment, I think it's just more of a, a comment for the planning board, just to make sure that the, that the design incorporates it.
We've incorporated it.
Awesome, thank you.
Sorry, Shelby, I don't know if, I don't know if you mentioned that this has already been approved by Conservation.
Yep, we went before.
Well, he said the negative, and I just, I wasn't following if that was what, this one and the same, okay.
But then it did come up through Engineering, so we think that, yeah.
Okay, great. The one thing I feel like we might be a little short on is parking spaces, on the other hand, there's lots of parking around there.
Exactly.
So I just think, sort of as a general comment, as we think about further development of that whole area, that we account for maybe, I'll call it, parallel parking on the road as we kind of improve those roads, so not asking for anything or suggesting anything for this particular site, but I do think that those number of spots could be easily, you know, quickly used up, given what I've seen at Tufts and other places, so, again, I don't think it's an action for the planning board, but just to be, I guess, to be on the record, that I think that we've got to kind of further develop that area for better, better marked parking. Question perhaps for you, Kristi, is the policies, since we have responsibility for the dog, for the leash law policy, right, our board does?
It's a bylaw.
It's a bylaw.
A by, by, sorry.
Yeah, so, so it had to be, you, you proposed it, but, yeah, it was per by town meeting.
So I guess who has jurisdiction over the, the policy that would govern the dog park? Does it become a bylaw, or is it?
Um, Recreation would create the policies, so they're, I know they're working with the Animal Control Officer, just like they create policies for other recreational facilities.
Okay, okay, all right, I just didn't know, all right. And one suggestion on the signage would be, it's great to have a, you know, signs there that accurately depict what can and can't happen, I think even having a QR code, you know, for more information about the policy, back to our amazing website, would be something I would suggest, or like even, you know, I don't know, like, like, we're out of, you know, the, 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 any feedback even, like, the dog receptacle is full, or the bags are empty, or whatever, I mean, I think it would be, there potentially is a two-way communication opportunity there, so. Otherwise, I think it looks great, and I'm happy that the B-Walt question was answered, thank you.
Sure.
Other questions?
No.
No?
Shelby stole my thunder.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Yes, those are good questions, for sure.
Jen, thank you very much.
Well, I, well. I have questions. So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood, a basic question to start off with, is it the expectation that this part, the park will be open year-round, or is it just seasonal?
We won't plow it or shovel it, so I feel like winters lately, knock on wood, and probably jinxing it, it's pretty mild, and so if there's no And so if there's no snow and you can access it, I think of it like the pickleball courts. If there's no snow, people go out and play and it's warm enough. So the park would be open. But once it, you know, if there's plowable snow, it would not be usable.
Okay.
Well, but people could bring a shovel and shovel it, right?
I mean, I guess.
No, I'm just, I mean, they do that on pickleball, they do that on the pickleball courts and, right? I mean, why, I guess, why wouldn't we?
Maybe more discussion or thought on that. I was just saying with the peystone, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I was gonna say the challenge is the peystone.
That's why I'm sort of.
For the parking, that's exactly where I was going with it.
No, with the.
The, the surface is going to be made of peystone, which is, so I think shoveling that might be just tough. And I think the parking lot is also going to be gravel, so that might be tough parking.
Yeah, I mean, if there's three feet of snow, I'm sure people aren't going to bring their dogs there. But if it's just the shoveling out the gate to get in, to get in, I think that's acceptable. I was actually asking the question because I was worried about, I just heard tonight that the parking area was going to be gravel and I was worried about the plowability of that, for one, for one thing. So, but that, that's very helpful and I look forward to, you know, seeing the policy at some point in regards to how you'll handle the seasonal piece if there's a need to even put that with inside the policy.
Huskies would love this.
Yeah, yeah. To expand on the signage topic that Shelby brought up, I would expect that we'd have some guidance on what defines a small dog and a large dog. So people know, you know, there's no question, hey, I have a cocker spaniel, which is kind of in-between versus, you know, something else. You know, what's appropriate to put on each side of the fence there. And then on the same thing on the signing, this just ties back to previous discussions we've had around wayfinding. I would love to, as, as we continue to look at wayfinding opportunities, to have this as part of it, which would include perhaps things with QR codes, et cetera, so that people know, you know, where it's at. If they're not familiar in town, you know, how to get there. And then finally, I just want, you know, back to the parking topic for a moment. As I look at this, I just want to make sure I understand, this plan has been approved, if I heard correctly, by the DEP. If I see it, if I'm reading the diagram correctly, there's a sidewalk that kind of comes in front of the parking area that it kind of hooks down a little, it looks like there might be maybe something there, maybe a crosswalk across the road there. My question is.
No, no crosswalk. It just tied into the existing sidewalk that parallels Solomon Carter Fuller Way.
Okay, so my question, and that's exactly where I was headed, was, was part of the review of this, was the intersection there considered? So I would think that if we're going to put a sidewalk in there with the potential of a crosswalk in the future, that we would want that closer to the intersection. And then in addition to that, was there any discussion in regards to how close that parking is to the intersection? I'm imagining somebody taking a left-hand turn off of the main road there into the facility. And it looks like it's only about thirty feet away, which is a pretty small distance. So I just was curious as to if that was part of the discussion or if it can be part of a future discussion.
It's sixty.
It wasn't. So, go ahead, go ahead.
No, sorry, I was just gonna say, those are good comments to offer to the planning board.
Exactly, so it's already been discussed.
Certainly, certainly engineering has reviewed it and all of those things. But I think those are comments, good comments to offer to the planning board.
Okay. Terrific. And that was all I had. Any other thoughts, questions? I stand on what I said, okay.
Hang on just one second. But Patrick, just, I just think it's, you mentioned thirty feet. Again, I'm not.
I can't tell.
No, but, but like Christie said, the park is forty feet from, there's forty feet between it and the B-Walt's.
I read that as being this.
Oh, you're talking about on the.
I'm talking about from the edge of this, the blue car on the right-hand side.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about on the roadway, the Solomon Dr. Fuller.
Yeah, Solomon Carter Fuller. I'm talking about somebody who's driving north on Dr. Solomon Carter Fuller Way and making a left-hand turn. It's about sixty feet. Really, you think? Look at the car. No, I'm looking at the further drawing down where there's a scale marker. So there is no measurement on that and that's why I was just questioning. But if, again, if this is somewhat conceptual, I'm sure there's going to be some variation in that. But just something, again, to Christie's point, it's a good question to raise and have them just discuss it.
I'll raise, I think I raised this Jen when you were before us, many moons ago. And that is related, but somewhat tangent to this, is we need better signage at Lake Chauncey for traffic flow.
We were working on it. Our new park leads person actually developed a draft of traffic flow. So I have sent that to police and fire and DPW because we all agree. With the increased activity up there, we need, you know, better kind of direction, even just in where things are. So if you're looking for field five, go this way. So it's definitely, we do have a draft.
Thank you for taking that feedback and acting on it.
And I will just say that I am very supportive of this. I am a dog owner and I don't live very far from here, so I am looking forward to this. So thank you very much for, for bringing it forward and updating us on what's happening.
Thank you.
So any further comments or, I don't think we need an emotion or anything?
You know, I'm sorry, one more, one more comment on the signage. And I, I don't know if this would come back before this board as part of it. It wouldn't, no? Okay.
They are, they, I will say though, that I went to the one-stop where this was presented, the one-stop meeting. And it sounds like they are, there is going to be discussion at the planning board about signage.
Okay. So I guess a comment, you know, again, for the process to the, is also, you know, we'd love to believe that people are well-behaved. We'd also like to be, believe that dogs are well-behaved, but that is not always the case. And so the sign should have a mechanism by way of if there is a problem, if there's a nuisance dog, if there's a problem, how would someone, what is the proper way to report that? You know, I don't know that we want someone calling 911. So what is the proper way to report that? And I know per the Stanton grant, I had asked you this, do people have to get passes? Like, but they don't. Like, that's a requirement, just to be clear, right? The Stanton grant cannot, it has to be free and accessible. And it's not just to Westport residents, right?
Right.
Right, I mean, we're not going to be carting people to get in, okay.
I can look with the animal control officer, maybe if she has an idea.
Yeah, I just, you know, I mean, if it's an emergency situation, what's the action? Or, and again, maybe that's in the QR code for questions about use of the park. And then you don't have to listen.
Yeah, everyone's phone number, yeah.
Or have a huge sign, like, you know, so.
But if there's a medical emergency, it's still 911.
Right, 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 right. But I mean, if you, you know.
If someone's not cleaning up after the dog, it's not a 911 call.
This is pretty standard, I think, at all of our other facilities. Like, our number is listed. I think we have police listed, so I kind of, you know, I think that we have obviously the animal control officer's number and I can get her thoughts.
I just.
For sure.
Again, the, it's probably less of a dog behavior issue than a human behavior issue, so.
Great.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you Jen, appreciate it.
Great, thanks Kyle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Kyle.
Appreciate it. All right, moving on.
And here she is again.
That's right, moving on. Recreation Department update, including but not limited to Lake Chauncey update and block party update.
Great, so I'm Jen Kirkland, Recreation Director. I'll start with the, I think, easier one. We're planning the block party again for Friday, June 28th. There, it'll be at Base State Common, like it has been for the past few years. I feel like that location has worked out really well for everybody. Police, fire and DPW have all been notified and are on board. I feel like at this point, it's a pretty well-oiled machine down there, so we know what we're doing. There's no rain date for the event, so that's sort of my update there. Everything, you know, we'll have food trucks, bounce houses, hay rides, pony rides. The reminiscence will be back. So it's usually a fun night.
It's a great night.
Yeah.
Don't, don't undersell it, it's a great night.
Just about a month away, which is crazy, so that's my update for that. I don't know if there's any questions. Like I said, it's pretty, it's all the same.
What are the hours Jen?
Five-thirty to nine.
Thank you. Great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Great. So moving on now to Lake Chauncey. So again, it was a really hard year to recruit lifeguards, but again, we're not alone. Still, there's a nationwide shortage of lifeguards. We didn't get the applicants, we had some applicants, but not enough, not nearly. I would need at least fifteen to feel comfortable opening the beach with staff and we didn't get nearly enough. So we're planning to open the beach again, Swim at Your Own Risk. We'll open the gate, Town Hall hours, that's worked well in the past, the past two years that we've had to do it. But the new, the difference this year is that I was able to retain a vendor to offer swim lessons. So I think over the past couple of years, the people don't necessarily miss the lifeguards as much as they miss the swim lessons. So we'll have a vendor come in, teach swim lessons. We're going to do three sessions a week on Mondays and Wednesdays, three sessions. So there'll be a lot of availability for people to take lessons. We're going to put the ropes in the water, so, you know, there'll be designated swim area. We're going to do the weed treatment, so the swim area will be free of weeds. The Board of Health will test for bacteria weekly as they've done. They'll start that mid-June, even earlier, I think, June 10th. And we're also going to do the algae treatment as well. So hopefully, we shouldn't have a problem with algae and have to close the beach and cancel swim lessons, which would be unfortunate. So we're, all of that is in place. Excited to work with this vendor. They're all about water safety, so that is sort of how they model all of their classes. They want everyone to be safe in the water. Prices are relatively reasonable. They understood our model that, you know, you go to some private places and swim lessons can be expensive, but they understand that we try to offer things at a relatively reasonable rate so that everybody can join. So I'm looking forward to partnering with them and I think it'll be a good summer. Happy to answer questions or if they missed anything.
Great to hear.
So my favorite question about bathrooms. So first of all, congratulations.
Thanks.
Because I think you've made something very good out of, like a really frustrating situation. So thank you for putting all of these things in place. Do you want to touch on?
Yes, thank you, I knew I was forgetting something. So that we have bathrooms on site and so during swim lessons, we will open those bathrooms. Otherwise, we will put another porta potty in the parking lot, which we've done in years past, which is work fine. But the, the bathrooms will be open, the swim lessons will be tentatively eleven to one-thirty-ish. So the bathrooms would be open for anyone to use during those times.
A quick question, the, when you open the, the gate on Lyman Street, you'll also be opening the gate for the handicap parking?
Uh, yes.
And access, and there'll be a handicap accessible porta potty there as well?
Uh, yep, there is one already in the parking lot. We only get handicap accessible units.
Okay.
So there'll be one there. Yeah, it is across the street. We have handicap parking across the street as well as that one that's on the beach side.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, I was writing some notes down. So there's two, two porta potties?
Uh, there will be, yes.
One on each side of the street, both handicapped?
Uh, both are handicapped, but they'll be in the parking lot across the street.
Both of them?
Yes.
Is there, because I remember, if I remember correctly, years past, the porta potty was way on the other side of the parking lot over near the pickleball courts. And I thought I only ever saw one, so you're saying there's two. Is it still planned to be all the way on the other side or is it?
That's where we've put them in the past.
Okay.
I could move it.
I mean, I.
I just don't want to block a parking. And typically those front spaces are the handicap spaces.
Yeah, I don't know. I would just say if there's an opportunity to move it somewhere closer to the beach area. So handicap individuals who are at the beach aren't having to not only go across the road, but across an entire parking lot to get to, to get to it, so.
I think that, yes, I agree. I think the challenge is you also have some residences right there, so.
Yeah, and it's not the most desirable thing to see. I, I, I like to have it back, but I'm, I guess, more concerned about accessibility.
Yep.
So just something as you think about it, plan on it, to consider. It, it sounds like, by the way, great work on getting a vendor. Very happy to hear that. This is something I've asked for, for a while, to be creative and start to do it, so thank you. It sounds like you're still kind of in the planning mode, so there's no date yet, time yet as to when those sessions will be offered?
We have them, I'm just, they're not public yet. We're just still ironing out to make sure it works with our schedule. They have a little bit of, not to get too much into the weeds, they have a kind of a monthly billing and typically we do things on like a weekly basis. So we're just kind of ironing out some last-minute details, but they'll start end of June through August.
And how will people sign up? Do they come to your office?
They'll come direct to our website, just like they sign up for any other program. Yep.
All right, terrific. And I think that's all I had.
So I just want to go back to the bathrooms. So, so, and I apologize for doing this now Jen, I haven't had a chance to reach out to you. But I, I did get some feedback that the, and perhaps it's because we're getting warmer weather, that the porta potty near the pickleball courts needs to be maintained a little bit better than it is being maintained. And maybe that's, I don't know, often it's serviced.
They come at least once a week, but this is helpful. Some, we, at our more popular locations, Haskell being another one, we get kind of this feedback and win, there's a phone call to them.
It's the nature of it, so, right. So just if, and with temperatures and use increasing, that's great.
Yeah.
I really would like for us to figure out a way to have the bathrooms on-site be open and maintained during all the open hours. I, I think, you know, it's a public facility to have people, you know, I mean, you know, if you're a parent, you've got a couple of kids, you've got the water there, there's no lifeguards, which I understand, it's Swim at Your Own Risk. And, and then it's like, I gotta bring everyone off the beach to go, you know, for my one kid to go to the bathroom. You know, it's not just a minor inconvenience. I mean, it might be like a real kind of hardship and struggle. And then I worry, in the absence of user-friendly facilities, what other measures people take? And I don't want to get graphic here, but they will.
Yep.
And we're trying to treat the water.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, and I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm just being.
No, no.
You know, so, you know, I don't know if there's a, I'm not asking, you know, is there a senior work-off position of someone who can restock it? I'm not suggesting they clean the bathrooms, but is there, you know, is there a position that we can reasonably create to staff that? And again, I know it's hard enough to get lifeguards.
Yeah. Well, we were thinking, this has come, I want them open too. I, I'm with you. Having some sort of bathroom attendant, it seems, I've talked to other communities where if you're saying Swim at Your Own Risk, that means there's no staff there. But something that has come up recently is that if you had a crossing guard, could one of their duties be to kind of cross people, which is always a concern crossing Lyman? And then also maintaining the bathrooms. Still kind of ironing that out as maybe a way to have a staff person there that's, as a crossing guard and able to kind of keep an eye on the bathrooms.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I can see that person doing a number of different things there.
But that brings up another topic, you know, I was thinking about Shelby and I, I, I agree with everything you just said in regards to the bathrooms. I would like to see that area much more fully utilized. I think it's a resource, a very underutilized resource, wonderful resource in our town and it's just not as accessible as it needs to be for many reasons. In regards to the hours, you just made me think of this, this question, you know, the hours of that being open, the hours of Town Hall, that means, if I'm correct, it's open on Tuesdays until eight o'clock.
Go down closer to like six-thirty, six-forty-five.
So it's, it's summertime, you know, people, you know, the sun's not going down until eighty, thirty. People are, want to go down there and watch the sunset. And sometimes they're going to walk around the rocks and go around the fence and, you know, who knows? All the issues that could create, right? I don't know what the ramifications are of broadening that. I feel it should be kind of not sunup to sundown, but you know, maybe eight AM to, to half hour before sunset. Because I'd like to see that, that property more fully utilized in some way. And I don't know what needs to happen, but I think it's something that.
I would.
And I, I will just say, I'll just give a little bit of brief history about that beach. Julia, my wife's grandfather owned that beach. He bought it, he moved the road back from the, from the water, built the beach and then sold it back to the town. And at that time, the intention was to have it as a fully accessible beach. So I, to me, it's, it's, it's just way underutilized and I'd love to see it be more open.
Yeah, and I don't know that we're going to solve that this year. Maybe we can inch forward on the bathroom piece, but I totally agree with you. I know we've had, I think, if Earl's stories watching, he'll get mad at me about the fence removal because of the trash and all, but, but that's kind of, I mean, I, I grew up where there aren't fences around beaches. And so I do think, and I would like, I would like us all to figure out a way in subsequent years to improve, and I'll call it accessibility even with a beach mat, right? If, you know, for people that are in a wheelchair, like it's sand, you can't, I, I don't think we have a beach mat, right?
No, there is one, there's a paved access to the water.
There is, okay, okay.
And there's paved access to the playground area, but it's entirely covered with sand.
Sure, sure.
You have to go, it blows all the time and you have to go clean it up. And it's just not as accessible.
Yeah, which is, yeah. So anyway, but maybe there's a grant opportunity, I'm not trying to tell you, do you job, Jen?
I would love to see this, I mean, since the first year I was on the board, I brought this topic up. I, I would love to see this as a future agenda item for discussion, is to understand how we can better utilize that. I think that the, the fencing is incredibly ugly and I think it prevents people from using that space in a proper way. For months now, there's been a trash and chairs turned over sitting inside where the pump station is there. You know, they've been there for weeks and months. And so I don't think that that, to me, the fence isn't solving that issue. don't think that that, to me, the fence isn't solving that issue, I think it can be beautified quite a bit.
Yep.
So, we don't have to get into this now or any deeper, but I think it's an opportunity that we're missing right now, and I think we need to look at it in the future.
Cool.
Anyway, thank you, thank you very much, Jen, I really appreciate your work on this, and look forward to seeing all those kids down there.
Yep, me too.
All right.
Thank you, I think that was it.
Not just kids, come on.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
And the old people like the water too, right?
Good, I look forward to seeing you.
All right, you bet.
All right, on to item seven, no, excuse me, six, Waste Management Program Update.
Uh, yeah, so I, along with the Public Health Director, Public Works Director, DEP rep, Board of Health rep, which is Dr. Ehrlich, and then Shelby, as your Select Board rep, are working to accomplish several action items in order to move forward with Pay As You Throw on July 1st, so in your packet, I've outlined some of those items. One is the hauling contract with E.L. Harvey, so we have been working with town council to really develop an updated contract for, that would take place beginning July 1st, and some new things within it are just language around how the town would provide enforcement measures, so I think we've heard a lot about some of the concerns that the town has raised related to the amount of waste that we, that we have, and I think we're hearing a lot from folks saying that if the enforcement was better, that that would be helpful. So, so in addition to the Pay As You Throw that we're talking about doing, some changes that we're making with the permits, we also are, have some increased enforcement. The Waste Zero contract, which the board authorized me at your May 14th meeting to finalize and execute, that is very close to being done, that contract would supply us with the bags. That will initially, initially, there'll be a couple of locations in Westboro, and then we can sort of work on that, but just really wanting to set expectations that it will likely just be a handful of locations initially, and as soon as we have those names, we will publish it far and wide. Waste Zero actually does that work with the vendors, and so we have to wait till that contract is finalized before we can create those relationships. The permits, which we call stickers, but now we're going to call them permits, we talked at the last meeting about stickers that, or permits, that have the license plate written on them, so originally, we had been told by the Health Department that they couldn't get those, though we were able to identify some neighboring communities that have those types, so we're working on getting those, and then we'll get those ordered, and those will be annual stickers, permits.
We'll get it.
And, so those will be available for folks, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. And then, really important, related to enforcement, currently, the Town Board of Health Staff does provide some level of enforcement sporadically, but in working with town council and looking at other communities do, we did talk a little bit with last meeting about what we, what I called at the time like a term of, Terms of Use, but what we ultimately did was we drafted some regulations that the Board of Health would have the opportunity to consider and adopt, if approved at their meeting going on now, then those would go into place, and that allows us to find folks who are not doing what they're supposed to, using the bags, having permits, things like that, and it also actually would allow us to revoke permits. So, those regulations are under the Board of Health, and then, in order to do enforcement, we would also establish Waste Management Wardens, so sort of similar to how we have Sandor Pond Wardens, we would have Waste Management Wardens, so they would also be appointed by the Board of Health, and they would help us, help with enforcement at the transfer station. So, lots of things going on, but getting close to the finish line. And then again, just wanting to mention those two additional info sessions, one on June 5th at 10:00 AM at the Senior Center, and June 18th, 6:00 PM here at the town hall. So that's just the update.
Any questions?
No, I mean, I'll just say, Kristi has done a great job leading this work, working in collaboration with Jen Sullivan, and it's, waste is complicated, is what I'll say. You know, I think, Kristi, I think you've said that we're optimistic that the bags will sort of be in place and up and running. If they're not, if something goes awry with the contract, we may have to push things, right? Is that, is that fair?
It's fair, I just don't want to confuse people by sort of explaining how that would all work, but, yeah.
Yeah, so I just want the board to be aware that if the bags are, if that bag contract isn't in place, and we feel confident that we're ready to go, we may need to push things, but I don't want to, I want to be transparent to the board and to the public, but where all systems go at this point, as Kristi, as Kristi has said, but we want to leave a little margin for error.
Or, error is the wrong word.
So, I'm happy to answer your questions, Kristi.
Great work, it's a big scramble.
Yeah, just a couple of questions, so I think in the note you mentioned that you might be meeting earlier today?
Yeah, so, so we did meet with a representative from Harvey's earlier today, there, we have provided them with the contract as developed with council, and they pushed it to their legal team, but we were able to meet with them today related to some business terms, so not legal issues. I guess I will say that one of the things that we have heard from them at several meetings is potential, or that they are planning to change the hours, that's something that they're looking at doing. They are fully open to the, having enforcement agents on sites, they're really looking for a lot of enforcement support in the first three months of the contract, which I think makes sense, because we want to certainly educate folks and make sure that people are doing what they need to, just understanding that it's a completely new system, so, you know, those conversations were going well.
Okay, and then I see that the permits will be on the inside windshield now, and no longer on the bumper.
Correct, right, yeah.
Okay.
So trying to make things more visible for folks who are enforcing the regulations.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
That makes a lot of sense, okay. Yeah, overall, thank you very much, thank you very much for this work.
Yeah, great work, Kristi, I would just, a quick question, did I hear you correctly that tonight, the Board of Health is actually approving these regulations?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no opportunity to provide any feedback on them?
Nope.
Okay.
I mean, the working group with your represent, representation have provided feedback, and it's fully under their authority in order for it to sort of move forward with-
Okay, I just found, just so people understand where I was coming from, I found that the enforcement section was a little confusing in it, and it kind of jumps back and forth between the fines, doesn't talk about any, you know, future fines, things like that, so I guess we'll see how it plays out. My other question in regards to it is, in regards to the enforcement, is how are we going to track that, is there going to be a database, is it a clipboard that they're going to be carrying? How is it going to be maintained that somebody who was in violation on day one is now not in violation on day 91? If it's a three-month cycle, how do, how do we manage that?
Yeah, the Board of Health, it's under the Board of Health, so they'll set up that database, but they, they are already, they already track, and they actually are trying to improve their tracking of permits, so that will equally track if people are found in violation.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your work.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think that the enforcement component, as I, as I read it, was, what was it?
It's actually Jen Sullivan.
Oh, okay, do you want to?
I'm sorry, so she just said that they just finished, I guess, the Board of Health supported the regulations, but did not support the sticker being on the windshield, so it's, they want it on the front bumper, so that's a change.
Okay.
Anyway, go ahead.
Actually, that makes sense, because then, when someone's driving-
Theoretically, you're supposed to back in.
Well, no, when-
It doesn't make sense, because it's going to have your license plate written on it, and they're going to have to look down at the bumper to see, is that the right license plate?
Yeah, but with a camera, you're fine.
Just kidding. Those other communities that I've seen do this, put it on the windshield.
Well, right.
They usually put it on the passenger side windshield, but it's very-
So they're going to have to, they actually have to have another meeting before July 1st, because they have to appoint the wardens, so, anyway, what were you, I'm sorry?
No, no, I was just going to say, so I, I think that the enforcement on the regulations is better and stronger than what we have, right?
Oh, absolutely.
I think we can, I think I would say, let's see how it goes for this first year, and, and understand a little bit more about the operationalization of it, I think that's a great question, and again, not our jurisdiction, but I think it would be helpful for the Board of Health to provide an update to us as to how that's going to work, and hopefully enforcement is, with the presence there, I'm hoping enforcement needs are lower than we anticipate.
I hope so too.
So.
Thank you. All good?
Mm-hmm.
All right, not looking any further.
No question about the bag color, I'm just kidding.
I saw the bag color.
Just kidding.
Yeah, no access required, so, we'll move on. Community center update, item seven.
Great, so as you're aware, we've, or you had authorized me to finalize and sign the contract with CHA, I would say that Ian Johnson is the Select Board's representative to this, to this work, so we did finalize a contract with CHA to serve as the owner's project manager. Really, kudos to Kim, she's really been working on all of this, working really closely with CHA, finalizing the contract, and also working with them to create the RFQ for the architect, so that has now been advertised, and there's, will be a walkthrough in early June with bid responses due the week of June 17th, so the goal is to make the decision prior to the July 4th holiday, so really moving as quickly as possible, but really intentionally. I know the board had the opportunity to review the RFQ for the contracts, or sorry, for the architect, actually, probably two, a couple months ago, when we initially thought that we would put that out first, and so I think some of the things that we heard was making sure that it's clear that it's inclusive of the entire building, and not sort of the focus on the, on the first floor, making sure that we were clear that it's a multi-generational facility, and then really just underscoring the importance of how public, the methods for public feedback. So, there's a minimum of four in-person sessions, and then certainly making sure that there's an opportunity for folks to be able to provide feedback in a remote fashion, so through a website, or an email address, or something, you know, hopefully the architects will get creative so that folks can provide that feedback if they're traveling or away this summer when we're doing these info sessions. We are still feeling like we'll meet that deadline of the October town meeting for funding. I did want to mention that the original article that we had asked the board, or the town meeting, I guess, to fund, which was to get us sort of through fiscal '24 in terms of maintenance, utilities, all of that, as well as, there was $85,000 in there for the architect based on a quote that we had received from, from an architect that we've worked with. It did not contemplate the OPM as being required, which I did mention to the board, and so it was that, that final contract ended up being about $43,000, so we expect to have some additional funds available in that article. We also have a commitment, as needed, to take some money from the Recreation Revolving Fund, however, we also have ARPA funds available, which we do need to obligate by the end of this calendar year, and so we will move through the process with the finance team and the Advisory Finance Committee, but I guess I'm just saying, expect to see a request for some ARPA funding to cover that gap to, for the OPM contract.
And we've reviewed that with our Clifton Larson and feel like it's appropriate?
Yes.
Okay, great, okay.
Yeah. Oh, so the, the, we've been working, the Recreation Department, Senior Center, DPW, Kim and I, as well as IT have been working on addressing any building needs currently. We did have sort of the things that we really wanted to do to make the building look really, really great as folks walked in, and we didn't like that price tag, given that we are certainly going to be going through with renovations, so we've, we've substantially reduced that scope to do just some, some limited patching and painting, and then we also need to do, one of the IT things that we need to do is get fiber to the building, we were waiting to hear back from the state on a grant that IT had applied for, we found out today that we did get it, so we're really excited about that.
Congratulations.
And so we'll be able to move forward with that. Also, we were able to, we had initially identified some furniture needs for the Recreation Department, we actually had a local business in town that, that gave us donated furniture that they didn't need, so really understanding that it's going to be certainly an expensive fit-up, and so just trying to make some really smart decisions about how we open the building now versus later, so.
Yep.
Who should we thank for the furniture?
You can thank, I'm trying to remember the name, I will get that too.
Oh, I put you on the spot, sorry.
That's okay. Sorry, I'll have to go back.
Well, thank you for the work on this.
Yes.
It's great to see the progress being made and the consideration as well, so, thank you. Any other questions for?
Yeah, I had a question, we were talking about the architect piece, give me a second, I should have written it down. Oh, just as a matter of sort of process, and I don't know if this, just as town function versus the OPM and architect, I'm wondering if there would be a way to encourage, like, through the, all of our boards and committees, to have them participate in the process, like, they're sort of a captive audience, that, so if we can make sure that there's, I can see some boards and committees being particularly interested, like, like our members feel tied and related, like recreation is an obvious one, but if we can just make sure that that's part of the feedback loop, I think that that would be helpful, drive some interest too.
Great.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you, Kristi. Moving on to item eight, approval, excuse me, yeah, approval of continued intermunicipal agreements.
Great, so you have, we have two intermunicipal agreements, I'll start with animal control, we have animal control, Animal Inspector Services municipal agreement with the towns of Grafton and Shrewsbury, these, this is an annual agreement that we've been doing for several years. The, so with Shrewsbury, it's really more of a mutual aid type agreement, where they have, they employ their own animal control officer and animal inspector, but really, it's enabling us to have backup services with the town of Shrewsbury, that relationship is at no cost to either community, but it is outlined in the IMA. And then the second piece of that IMA is an agreement with the town of Grafton, where we actually provide the animal control and Animal Inspector Services to the town of Grafton, they do not have folks in those positions. Through this part of the agreement, the town of Grafton has charged 38% of the budget, so that's salary and wages and expenses that are incurred, plus a 10% administrative fee, and reaching out to the other town managers, they're very interested in continuing, and that this arrangement is, continues to be supported by our police chief as well as our animal control officer.
So I move to approve the extension of the intermunicipal agreement for animal control, Animal Inspector Services with the towns of Shrewsbury and Grafton through June 30th, 2025.
Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Okay.
I've got a second motion.
Yep, so then the second IMA is, is only with the town of Shrewsbury, and it's, again, very similarly a mutual aid type arrangement for inspectional services, and so we're able to sort of back each other up and use each other's departments for building inspection, plumbing, electrical, that's actually worked out very well for us, so we've certainly benefited from that arrangement, and the town of Shrewsbury is interested in continuing as well, as is our Community Development Director, and this is a two-year agreement, so this approval would go through June 30th of 2026.
So I move to approve the extension of the intermunicipal agreement for inspectional services with the town of Shrewsbury through June 30th, 2026.
Second?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right, moving on to item nine, approved job descriptions and/or amend classifications planned for the following positions, the Finance Director, the Assistant Town Planner, Custodian, and Water Maintenance Craft Person One.
Do we want to, Jen, is here?
Yeah, why don't we do, respective?
I've got them all, just to hear if there's any questions.
Okay, all right, perfect, well, why don't we do that one first, if that's okay?
Okay, so you have the proposed job description for the Assistant Town Planner, as you're aware, this is a new position funded in FY '25, it's funded for a partial year through the General Fund, with some additional funding through the Affordable Housing Trust, which combined, we anticipate the position would start on or about September 1st. We're looking to get the job description approved now and get a jump on recruitment in hopes that we can hit the ground running on September 1st. So the job description that you have- So the job description that you have, so again, it's a new job description. Looking for your approval of both the job description and then we would amend the classification plan to include it at the grade N-17.
Question? So was N-17 what we had originally anticipated this would be at? I just don't recall.
We had, in the, we had, N-16, there's a, it fits within, the amount that we budgeted was above the midpoint of an N-16.
Okay.
When we developed the job description, looked at the way we factor it, it's better, fits at N-17. And we have up to the midpoint of the range. There's enough overlap in the ranges effectively that it doesn't create an issue.
All right, thanks.
And as you just, to note, you all have the job descriptions, but they are, as you'll see, it's focused on transportation and housing. So really supporting the efforts of the planning department around those initiatives.
The Affordable Housing Trust is covering 11 hours per week of this position and reviewed and approved, you know, approved that the Housing Trust agrees with the job description. For the housing-related issues.
Any other questions or comments?
That's good. All right, so, you know, motion to approve that?
So I would move to approve the assistant town planner job description as presented and to amend the classification plan to include the position at grade N-17.
Second? Any further discussion?
Nope.
Seeing none. All those in favor? All right, thank you, Jenny.
So the other job description that we're looking to amend tonight is the finance director. As the board is aware, we have made some changes to the structure and organization of the finance department to include separating out the town accountant responsibilities. As Kristi noted earlier, our town, new town accountant will start next Monday. So this formally pulls those duties out of the finance director position and expands a few other areas, but it, it really is largely a function of removing the town accountant duties, which are now handled in a separate and distinct dedicated town accountant position. The classification doesn't change, so we're looking for your approval of the proposed job description.
Questions?
Yeah, do you have a question?
No, go ahead.
So, yeah, Kim, I, I did not do a comparison to the town accountant position. So apologies in advance if some of these questions, you could just say, yep, it's in that policy, I mean, that job description. So as I went through this, I'll just start from the top because it seems to be the most logical way. So just in the summary, the first strike through strikes, including all municipal financial operations. I'm curious as to why we're striking that and therefore whose responsibility would that be if not the finance director?
I'm just looking at...
Yep, no, no, take your time.
Yeah, I, I don't think the intention was to remove that. I mean, the finance director has oversight and I think we were just really amending how the summary reads, given that that summarizes. And then I think when you, in my opinion, when you read through below, it identifies that they have oversight of all financial operations.
Okay.
So sorry, is that going to remain then?
Is what?
Is there, I guess, I'm not convinced that there's a reason to remove it then. Because to me, again, I, I agree with Shelby, I think, at least where I think your intent was, is that this is the position that is.
At the summary level, that's why I was just...
Exactly. Is, is responsible for all municipal financial operations.
Yeah, and that's in paragraph four, supervises and oversees.
I think to Alan's point, I just don't think it reads, I think it's redundant. I think the statement reads directing all, directing the financial management operations of the town in accordance with applicable federal regulations, MGL, town bylaws and policies.
Okay. I'm fine with that. I just wanted to understand, okay, so, okay. Going down under essential duties and responsibilities, the paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4, paragraph four, the strikeout and controls all financial, this is in the first sentence, why, why are we striking and controls?
The town accountant has control over accounting functions statutorily.
Okay, so should it be, should it be striking though and controls all financial functions and striking out and accounting?
They have oversight of accounting. I think it's, I think the specific word control.
Okay.
They still plan, direct, coordinate because they, the finance director supervises those department heads. But as far as per MGL, it is the town accountant who has control over accounting functions.
No, that makes sense. Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next page with the paragraph that starts, it starts with the strikeout, provides support as needed. So this one was, so, so I guess it reads without the strike throughs, regularly attends meetings of the fin, advisory finance committee and provides support as needed, attends meetings of other town boards and committees as needed. And I guess I'm wondering, should that be and/or directed because this person reports to Kristi? It, it kind of feels like it's under this person, like as needed, I don't know. But I, I feel like, again, I know this person is highly skilled and a professional, but I just didn't know it should be and as directed. That was, it's a question, you have to manage the person.
I actually think the word required is, my mind is more appropriate there than as needed, but...
The advisory finance committee is attending the rate, attends a meeting and support is needed. For other towns, it's committee is needed. So if Kristi says, hey, you're needed at this committee meeting, it's as needed. Town manager directing that would define, would be the as need. I'm not managing, I'm not managing the person. It could be explicit, I don't necessarily think it needs to be.
It, it mirrors how it's written in other job descriptions, not that that's not a reason to not change it here.
If you guys are comfortable, I just, I'm highlighting things that stood out to me, that's all. Okay, next paragraph. We're striking a provides for payment of town obligations, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So the first one is, so whose responsibility is the first sentence? Is that now the town accountant?
That is all town accountant responsibility, that entire paragraph.
Okay, all TA, okay. The next paragraph is, I just had throughout it, why are we striking, whose responsibility is it?
That's town accountant.
All town accountant, okay. Thank you. Down toward the end, second to last, reviews purchases. I know that's under our procurement officer, but aren't, isn't there some responsibility since that person reports up to this person to review purchases, supplies?
That's actually town accountant. It really relates to payment for...
Okay, all TA, okay, thanks. And the next one, same thing?
Town accountant.
Okay.
And again, MGL defines many of the functions of the town accountant, so.
Thank you. Same, same for the next paragraph on the top, draws warrants on the treasury?
Town accountant.
Town accountant. The third one interprets and enforces towns' union contracts, maintains custody of all town contracts. That's the accountant?
Custody of contracts is the accountant.
Okay. Look at me learning. Okay.
I just want to make, the town accountant interprets and enforces town union contracts? Really?
From a payment standpoint.
Oh, from a payment, so okay, well, I guess that's, that's not clear. Again, I'm not looking at the town accountant's job description, so maybe it says for payment purposes, I don't know.
Well, it's, right, so enforces the contracts, I just...
Right, this to me is a very broad statement here.
But it's being struck from this person.
It is, it is. But the, the strike is with the understanding that it falls under somebody else's responsibility. And the question is, on, on this broad context, does it fall underneath the town manager or the town accountant? And it's on, on this broad context, like what I'm hearing is it falls under town accountant. But is that what it says? And we're not reviewing the town accountants.
Right.
Okay, well, I guess we can look at that after if we have questions.
Just to give a little more context, the, the town, the town union contracts, as you know, but I'll just say it, have a lot in there related to payments, benefits. So the town accountant is responsible for making sure that the employee is, is provided all of the things that they're supposed to receive under the contracts, which a lot of that, as you know, is either financial or, you know, potentially benefit time or things like that. So certainly not related to grievance procedures and discipline and things like that, but...
Based on that, I, I absolutely agree, it's not appropriate here. And that's what we're talking about, so, thank you.
Believe it or not, I'm at my final comment, and question I should say, under other skills and abilities, that first strikeout, good knowledge of principles, methods, and good knowledge is kind of a weird way to say it anyway, of principles, methods and practices of accounting, I get that. But that, they're not the accountant, but as this position, don't they have to have, is this part of their education? Don't they have to have basic understanding of principles, methods and practices of accounting to be in this position? I mean, because up above we say education, master's degree in accounting, business, finance, finance, business administration, or, or, or. So to me...
I think it's broader than accounting. I think that, that, in my opinion, was in here specific to this position being an account, combined accountant. It's more specific than it needs to be when the finance director does not serve as a town accountant.
Okay. And so, so then you're comfortable with the, the other one, the, where it starts, knowledge that would be a capital K, knowledge of the principles and...
Yeah, governing the financial operations, which is inclusive of assessing treasury accounting, but they are not functioning as any of those roles, so.
Okay. Do we need a reference there, Kim? Because you've referred to it several times relative to the accountant, something about Mass General law, or it's implicit in this language?
The town accountant job description addresses that there...
No, I meant for this position though, does, do they have to acknowledge of the Mass General law as it relates to municipal finance? It says...
It says laws.
It does at the, earlier in the job description?
Governing the town, the operations of the town. Implicit in that could be Mass General law, like vis a vis, but I, I'm just asking the question.
I think it's, it falls in other places within the job description, so I think that's why I didn't feel it was necessary to add it there.
When I read underlying laws, to me, that's laws of state and federal. And then bylaws are something specific to the town. And then regulations could be town or state or federal.
It says Mass General law in the summary. I'm fine with it. Again, it just was... Okay, thank you for going, walking me through that. Context is everything.
Any other questions? Just a couple of quick ones. On the first page, the...
I'm sorry, Sean, are you looking at the markup, the red, the markup or the clean copy?
The clean version, where it starts with responsible for. Maybe we just need a wordsmith that. It's responsible for the supporting the work, so you've got an extra "the" in front of the word supporting somewhere. Wherever you want to put it, you know, wherever you want to put it. The other question I had was, we mentioned OPEB specifically in here. We don't reference the pension plan. Now, I know we're part of Worcester Regional, so I don't know what their responsibility is related to Worcester Regional retirement.
I guess the treasurer collector typically works with Worcester Regional.
Treasurer collector, okay, okay.
Yeah, I, I do note, if, I will clean up some of the formatting too. The version where the changes were accepted, there's some formatting that doesn't look like it's, we'll, we'll fix that.
All right. Yeah, otherwise I like it. Thank you very much. Alan?
All right, a motion.
Move to approve the amended finance director job description as presented.
Second?
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
All right, the last two, while they're two separate motions, similar in nature. We are adding a custodian position to, it was funded in the FY '25 budget, as was a, an additional water maintenance craft person one position in the DPW. Specifically, that one is funded through the water, through enterprise funds. But both of these positions already exist. They're already classified, so that's why you're not being asked to amend the job description. Our classification plan identifies the number of positions, so we just need to increase for each of those positions by one to reflect the newly funded position.
So I would move to amend the classification plan by increasing the number of custodian positions at grade N-10 from three to four, and the addition of a third water maintenance craft person one position at grade W-4.
Second?
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you, Kim. All right, I think we've gone, gone through everything. We're going into issues and correspondence.
Nothing from you this evening.
Nothing from you, okay. Sean?
Quickly, I would like to thank everybody who came out for Memorial Day. I thought it was a tremendous turnout. I want to thank the Veterans Advisory Board. They did a terrific job per usual. I want to thank the high school band, especially the trumpeters that, I mean, multiple times doing taps. That seemed like a lot of pressure. They did a terrific job.
They did.
The, the singers who did the National Anthem, also the middle school band. And we also had the Boy Scouts, the Cub Scouts, the Little League was there. I'm sure I'm forgetting people, but it was a tremendous turnout. Thank you to everybody who was there to honor those we have lost. Thank you.
Great turnout from the entire community. Thank you.
I just want to wish the class of 2024 a great graduation. I think it's coming up right here around the corner. I think it's next weekend, isn't it? I think I got it right. And, you know, congratulations. Go forth, do great things, make Westboro proud, make yourself proud. And families, enjoy every moment.
And I, I only have one item. I'll just let the community know that Sustainable Westboro and the Community First Partner Homeworks will be hosting an informational center session about reduced energy costs on June 1st at 10:00 a.m. at the fire station and online. It will look to provide information on how to reduce your household's energy costs and your carbon footprint. So looking forward to people coming to see that. I know a lot of people are struggling with energy costs these days, so I hope to see a good turnout. That said, can I get a motion for executive session?
Yes. I move we enter into executive session under Mass General law, chapter 38, section 21a2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations and contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Patrick Purcell and Christopher Pann. And under Mass General law, chapter 38, section 21a7, to act under the authority of the select board to approve executive session minutes of May 14th, 2024. Thank you, CeeLo, for preparing those.
Second?
I declare that opening session would have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating and... Yeah, that's it, negotiating positions. And the board will not be reconvening an open session at the conclusion of the executive session. I already have a second.
Second.
Roll call vote.
IKEO, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
And Welchess. Thank you very much. Again, to Westboro TV. And we look forward to seeing all of you out in the community. Have a great night.
Have a great night.